All right, we have five, so welcome to the Oklahoma City City Council Meeting. We will start off with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'll ask Councilman Mackety to lead us in the invocation and Councilman Shadid lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody stand up.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to serve you and the people of Oklahoma City. Give us wisdom today as we deal with the issues that will be brought before us, be with the citizens who have concerns, that their concerns might be hurried and dealt with in a fair and equitable way. We thank you for being in control, for leading the city to the point that it is now, and that we take seriously our stewardship to move the city forward in a way that would glorify you, for which in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I will call the meeting to order, and we'll start off with a citation for Leading for Results. All right, this is the biggest nerve-wracking part of the whole meeting for me, so everybody be patient. We have a citation, and we will, I'll ask the clerk to read it for us.
Well, as Oklahoma City recognizes that an important factor in maintaining the confidence of our citizens is communicating results, well, as the city's performance management program, Leading for Results, we call it LFR, has reached its 10th anniversary of reporting results, well, as the program has grown over the years through the support of city council and leadership to become an example for other cities, being recognized once again this year by the International City County Management Association with a certificate of excellence in performance management. Whereas the Leading for Results initiative involves all departments and leadership through data collection, reporting, and discussion of results, whereas over 350 staff participate in the program by collecting and reporting data for their departments. Each year, over 30 staff members participate in the business plan, update processes facilitators, helping other departments update their business plans. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby recognize August 16, 2016, as the 10-year anniversary of Leading for Results, and wishes to recognize the contribution of the many city staff that have helped to get the city to this important milestone.
All right, everybody can show their appreciation. The LFR stuff is really cool, because in my opinion, it's the thing that I like the most about it, is it really shows citizens where their money is going and what it's accomplishing. So Doug Dollar, talk about the history of it.
Well, yeah, so again, 10 years with Leading for Results, we're really proud of that accomplishment. We just had, we have a gathering here of a number of the facilitators who've helped departments go through their planning. Maybe you all could stand up, just to see who all is here. We appreciate your service to the departments. And again, we've got hundreds of people throughout the city who help out with data collection. And again, like you say, we think of Leading for Results as kind of giving citizens a receipt for their taxpayer dollars. What do they get for the money they give us? What are the results they can expect from our, from our departments? And so, we appreciate this recognition, we appreciate the support of city leadership, and as Mr. Couch coined the phrase, and when we first started this, it's the way we do business from now on here at Leading for Results, so appreciate that.
All right, one more round of applause. And then ask Rebecca Grafina to come up, and anybody that you want to come up with you, you can. She is the Teacher of the Month for August, and there's a resolution, I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Well, as Rebecca Grafina has been named Teacher of the Month for August 2016 by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Well, as Rebecca earned her Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education from the University of Central Oklahoma. Rebecca has taught at Linwood Elementary School in the Oklahoma City Public Schools District for six years. Well, as Rebecca was in the first class at the Urban Teacher Preparation Academy, and now serves as a mentor for new teachers in the urban teaching environment. Rebecca is a believer in lifelong learning and has participated in the Lincoln Center Institute for Education, is an Oklahoma Energy Resource Board educator, and serves as a trainer and district leader for advancing science curriculum in the Oklahoma City Public Schools. Well, as Rebecca leads a robotics team at Linwood, and also instituted a dog therapy program and after-school program, and has led efforts to build an outdoor garden. Rebecca was honored to be chosen by Linwood Elementary School as Teacher of the Year for the 2015-2016 school year, and was named District Teacher of the Year, and has recently been named a finalist for the State of Oklahoma Teacher of the Year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Rebecca Grafina on her selection as the August 2016 Teacher of the Month by Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's show Rebecca appreciation. You've got robotics, dog therapy, and an outdoor garden, those are some interesting programs, so I'll turn the mic over to you and let you talk about whatever you want.
I just want to say thank you, and I'm really proud to represent Oklahoma City. And August 30th, they will announce the winner for the state, so I hope that I get to represent all of our city around the state of Oklahoma and nationally.
Francis, I move the item second. Everybody cast your votes, and that passes unanimously. Forgot about that part. I even had a, I even had a joke prepared. All right, from the office of the mayor, item B is, B and C are appointments, I think we can vote on those together. Everybody cast your votes, passes unanimously. We're on to item four, which is the Journal of Council Proceedings, is to receive the journal from August 2nd and approve the journal from July 19th. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. And item five is a request for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Vice Mayor, item 9A1 is listed on the doc, on the agenda to be referred back to the Planning Commission. Under, on page 19, under item 9E1, item C, 8128 Northwest 8th Street, we ask that be stricken, we need to re-modify that notice. Moving to page 20, under item 9F1, item L, 1410 Northeast 24th Street, we ask that be stricken, there's a new owner. Item N, 320 Southeast 49th Street, we ask that be stricken, the owner has secured. And on item 9G1, so on page 20, item M, 320 Southeast 48th Street, we ask that be stricken, the owner has secured.
Okay, moving on to item six, we have a revocable permits, and we have one, and it is for the Oklahoma Contemporary Arts Center, that's going to hold the Midnight Streak 5K. I think we have Brett Gaither here to tell us about the event.
So the event is a 5K run that does fundraising for the arts, I don't know which way to face that up.
Yeah, go on the microphone.
Okay, hey, so hey, it's for a 5K event that is fundraising for Oklahoma Contemporary Arts education programming. The day kicks off at 6:00 PM with a make and take, which is where kids come and do art projects that they get to take home with them. We kick off the run at 8:00 PM, it's going to be a 5K run through Midtown, Automobile Alley, and then back to our park, and then we're going to have an after-party that goes until midnight.
Do you have to, do you have to run really slow to make it to midnight?
So, I mean, yeah, yeah. But it's, you know, people, generally, the race takes about 45 minutes tops, and then the rest of it's just people hanging out in our area, getting to celebrate having ran through the space. It's a good time, and it raises money for a good cause.
Well, it sounds like a fun event. Everybody cast your votes, passes unanimously. Thanks, good luck.
Awesome, thank you guys, thank you.
We'll recess the council meeting, and we will convene as Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, we've got two items. Look for a motion on those. Everybody cast your votes, passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the MFA, and we will convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, got four items on that. Everybody cast your votes, passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the PPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, two items. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. We will adjourn the EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. There you go. All right, are there any individual considerations?
Yes, I'd like to have Eric Winger speak to item 7AO.2, 7AO.2.
Two, okay. Okay, we'll get Eric in here.
Item AO, I'm sorry to throw your curveball, I meant to ask earlier on this. This is an important traffic signalization project on Southwest 44th and South Mustang Road, and if you just give the viewers a little status of where we are, it's been a while getting to this point, a lot of hoops had to be jumped through, a lot of people put some great effort into it, if you would, sir.
Thank you, Councilmen, so I'm happy to update this morning. So this is a new traffic signal to be installed at Southwest 44th and Mustang Road. It's a traffic signal that actually warranted some time ago, but there weren't any funds for the actual construction. It wasn't included in our previous bond issues, and so we had sought funding for this project. Fortunately, this year, we're able to create a partnership with ODOT, so it's turned into an ODOT safety project. What you're approving today is the city's match for that signal, so today you're approving $80,000 to go towards the 80/20 match. Plans are underway, and we're expecting that this will be completed hopefully in about the next nine to 12 months tops, but again, it's under an ODOT schedule, it'd be bid with some of the other ODOT work. We've also experienced some interest from some of our private business owners in the area, and we're also still anticipating possibly some private donations to offset the city's portion. If we receive those, we'll bring those back to the council for consideration.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your efforts in seeing this through.
You're welcome.
Hearing no other considerations, we'll cast our votes, and passes unanimously. Moving on to item eight, which is the concurrence docket. Are there any individual considerations? Okay, hearing none, we'll cast your votes, and passes unanimously. Move on to item nine, which is items requiring separate votes, and we've got eight zoning cases. The first one is in Ward 6, it's in, oh no, that's being requested back to the Planning Commission. So we're going to item two, which is also in Ward 6, and it's a ABC 2 issue. And is the applicant of this one present? Okay, and did Meg ask anybody to?
Move the item.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item three is in Ward 3. It is a ABC 3 issue at 8200 Southwest 3rd Street. Larry, I'll let you take it away.
Has anyone signed up for this? You the applicant?
Yes.
I feel like you're explaining what, what you're trying to do with this.
I built, I had that building built in 1981, and I had a sofine club in there for 15 years, and I'm wanting to put the sofine club back in there. It, it's a liquor, liquor dance, like dance, not, not women, but dance.
This particular club was approved, this particular request was approved by the Planning Commission. Nobody appeared at the Planning Commission to protest. I am in the possession, as I'm sure you've seen now, a letter from a gentleman who's opposed to it, and I also received a phone call, purported to be some of the business people out there. What do you plan to do to control what goes on at that particular site, so that it doesn't interfere with the other good things that are going on in that area?
I've been in business 45 years in Oklahoma City, and I've always ran a real respectable club, and it's strictly for older people, it's not for young people at all. And I've never had a problem, I mean, look at the records.
The two things that were, were mentioned were illegal activity going on outside the club, and litter and trash around the club generated by the patrons.
Yes, we always, before we leave at night, we police the area and pick up stuff, and I have uniformed security guards there also.
So there will be security provided by you?
Yes, they will be.
Since the protesters did not come to the meeting, I'm kind of a little bit agghessed, so I'm going to move for approval with some reservation.
Thank you, sir.
All right, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, move on for, to item four, which is also in Ward 3. It's a rezoning from agriculture to C3. Larry?
Has anybody signed up? This was approved by the Planning Commission, I move for approval.
Everybody cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item five is also in Ward 3, rezoning from I3 to I2. Larry?
Has anybody signed up? This, I think, is a very good project also, it was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, I move for approval.
Everybody cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item six is an issue in Ward 2, it is a rezoning to a spud. Ed?
Anybody sign up to speak?
Yes, sir.
We did have one protester, David, do you want to just speak to maybe some of the traffic?
Good morning, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Ryan McNeil, who's the developer, and Tim Johnson, who's the civil engineer. Our site here is located at Northwest Highway in Penn. What we have is a bit of a unusual situation, in that the hard corner at one of the most heavily trafficked intersections of the city is owned residential. I think everybody would agree that residential zoning at Northwest Highway in Penn probably isn't appropriate. So what we have done is designed the site to hopefully spur some additional development, perhaps south of us. We believe what we've done is going to help the traffic pattern. What we've agreed to do on Northwest Highway, as you can see here, is have a deceleration lane, which we think should help and get some traffic off of the highway into this development. One of the concerns that Planning Commission raised by Ms. Powers was, can we make sure that this site is designed in such a way that if that large office complex south is ever developed commercially, these could flow together? And so we've, we've taken great care to make sure that that has happened, and that's why I believe ultimately Planning Commission did recommend approval.
What's the part where they marked out the drive on Northwest Expressway must align with the existing Barnes Avenue?
Yeah, the issue there is, the existing Barnes Avenue would have been about here, and the problem with aligning it there is, all of a sudden, you're putting a deceleration lane in basically people's backyards, and Ms. Powers and the Planning Commission didn't, didn't like that approach, the burden they felt it might put on those neighbors. And so they preferred the location as we showed here, to pull that away from there, it still allows us adequate distance to the stoplight.
Okay, all right, I'll move for approval. Second.
Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Item seven is in Ward 4, it's a 5301 South Henni Road, it's a rezoning from agriculture to a spud.
Does anybody sign up to speak on this? I know that Pete's in favor of this, he knows the applicant and what they're doing, and he asked that it be moved forward.
Everybody cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item eight is an issue in Ward 2, it's 3710 Northwestern Avenue, rezoning from C3 to a spud.
Anybody sign up to speak?
No.
This passed Planning Commission unanimously, no protests, I move for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Moving on to item B, which is an ordinance on final hearing. No questions or, or comments?
Item B and C are both have to do with the Bricktown Design Committee, one has to do with signs, and another one has to do with the makeup of the committee.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item C is also an ordinance on final hearing.
Move the item.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item D is an ordinance that's going to be introduced, and I think we have a presentation on it.
Yes, we've had a couple of presentations on our changes to our solid waste program, and a couple of weeks ago, we actually had a contract amendment, or a new contract with Waste Management for the new proposed solid waste services, and we talked about that time there would be a rate increase that would go with that, and Brett Weingard is here this morning, our acting utilities director, to go over that.
So we do not have a present, this is Brett Weingard, acting utilities director, we do not have a presentation, but I'm here for the introduction. At the meeting, the last meeting, we had the presentation, and what we're looking at is for residential rates to go up three and a half percent, which is 72 cents per month, and for that, we would be rolling out the 96-gallon recycling program on February 2018. With the approval of the fees, we will notify Waste Management to begin buying the 96-gallon recycling collection trucks, and we will begin the procurement process and the borrowing activities for OC to fund approximately $10 million worth of 96-gallon recycling cart purchases and the delivery of those carts in advance of February 2018 program.
And will the fee kick in as soon as we approve the ordinance?
October 1 of '16, it's a four-year program, three and a half percent per year, and, but at the same time, for customers that have a larger number of carts, for those that have three or four carts, that price will go from $3.49 down to $2.25, and will remain at $2.25 for four years.
Okay.
As an encouragement to get people to use more containerization, so that we can get the trash all inside of a container.
Quick question. I've had several citizens call me with some concerns about how the new system would work. How would you recommend that a citizen who wants to find out the details of what, what the recycle cart will be, what, what bags will or will not be permitted, and things like that, what should they do?
Well, we just approved the program on the 2nd of August, and so as we start rolling out these programs, we'll be providing information to the public. We will not want to be providing that information until it's about time for them to start behaving differently. So they'll be starting to collect the 96-gallon carts in February of '18. So about December of '17 is when we'll start providing information to customers about their new routes, their new days, the every-other-week recycling program, the 96-gallon carts, and what they can put into the 96-gallon carts. Some of those will be different, like cardboard. We'll be able to collect cardboard with the 96-gallon carts, we can't do it in an 18-gallon bin right now.
Thank you, sir.
So basically, we feel like holding off on informing everybody of all the new changes is probably the best bet, that way, since it's still quite a ways in the future, of when the actual changes are going to happen.
Yeah, otherwise, we could confuse people, and then they might start trying to do the new things before we're ready to have it happen.
Right. Okay. Any more questions? Okay, I'll look for a motion on it then. Cast your votes, and that ordinance moves on, for a public hearing on August 30th, and then final adoption on September 13th. Item E is the dilapidated structure list. I'll look for a motion on that.
Move the item.
Has anybody signed up to speak on the, on any dilapidated structure? Okay, so we'll cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item F is the unsecured list. Anybody signed up for item F, unsecured list? Everybody cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item G is abandoned building list.
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes, passes unanimously. And item H is removing from, removing properties from the abandoned building list.
Move the item.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously. And item I is a resolution about the Wheeler Development District. Do we have a?
Kathy O'Connor, sure, this morning.
Good morning. The item on your agenda today is to, a resolution to establish a chief review committee for the Wheeler The process, though, that we have to go through in order to consider the information, and all this is still very preliminary, we've received a request, staff is in the process of evaluating it, but the mechanism in order to get this to City Council is to create a TIF review committee. And if you'll recall, the TIF review committee is made up of a representative from each of the jurisdictions that receive ad valorem taxes, a representative from the City Council who serves as the chair, a representative from the Planning Commission, and then three at-large members who are appointed by the committee, names that are recommended by the mayor, and then appointed by the committee that are designed to represent the business community. So this is really the first step in the process. Once the TIF review committee has been established, and we completed the review of the information that we've been provided by the developer, the TIF review committee would meet, they would consider it, they might have one or two meetings, they would make a recommendation, the plan would then go to the Planning Commission, and then finally, it would come to City Council. So there's a pretty lengthy review process that's a part of the creation of any TIF district, and obviously, it's very public. All of these meetings will be public meetings and public review of the information.
Cool. You got any questions? All right, thanks, Kathy. I'll look for a motion on this. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item J, I don't think we need executive session. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item K, I don't think we need executives-- oh, this doesn't have executive session on it. I'll look for a motion on item K. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Then item L is something that Jim has been intimately involved with for a number of years, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is the SARDAS agreement, and I'm gonna give you a little history on this to put it in context. SARDAS was authorized by Congress in, I think, '74, constructed in the '80s, and the state had an obligation to repay the debt on SARDAS, and the state was sporadic in making those payments on SARDAS. And they'd make a couple of years, and it gets appropriations, and they didn't, and then they got into dispute with the federal government. And the federal government took them to court and finally came down with a judgment that they owed the remainder, and the feds had to pay it. This was-- came to a head primarily in 2010. In 2010, the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and the city set up and said, "We will satisfy the remaining payments on SARDAS," which was about $27 million, "and then we would get the storage rights on SARDAS." On top of that, there's always been an outstanding claims by the Choctaw and Chickasaw Indians that this is their tribal lands, and they had actually control of the water within these areas. And so after we stepped in, made the payment, was assigned the storage rights for SARDAS, the Chickasaws and the Choctaws filed suit against the state, the city, and the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust. And it was a number of things. It was not only the transfer of the water from SARDAS up to Oklahoma City, it also included who was in charge of water in southeastern Oklahoma, which is a big issue. Was it the state, or was it the tribes, based upon their tribal rights granted to them? Quite frankly, back to the Treaty of Dancing Rabbit Creek when they were relocated, the Chickasaws and Choctaws were relocated here, and that treaty was in the early 1800s. Went through a process, went through a couple of mediators through this process, and a deal's been struck now. And the business terms of the deal, it's a 98-page agreement with a lot of attachments, but the general business terms are that the state retains its sovereignty and ability to administer water in the state of Oklahoma, or in these treaty areas, and all the existing water right applications are still valid, their grandfathered invalid, and the state will administer future ones. The tribes will get a seat at the table for certain water right applications and transfers out of the basin. And there's a process where there will be technical committees, and the state will have representatives, and the tribes will have representatives, and they will make recommendations to the Water Resources Board regarding that. We agreed to a lake-level management plan that's really strong, and it maximizes the amount of water that will be in SARDAS at all times, it's still allowing us to take draws. It calls for minimum stream flows in the Kaimichi Basin, which was important to the tribes. The lake-level management plan and the minimum stream flows are very, very important to the tribes as we go forward. And then Oklahoma City gets water out of this. We'll get about 110,000 acre-feet of-- is the average yield. The firm yield is 97,000 acre-feet. Average yield is what we'll get on, we think we'll get on average years. 97,000 would be what we get under drought conditions, under the worst-case scenario. And to put that in context for you, right now, we use about 130,000 acre-feet of water for the entire city and what we sell to others, so adding 110 to that is, will get us through several generations in Oklahoma City as we move forward. Now, this will require us to build infrastructure. We're gonna have to parallel the line from Lake Otoka to Lake Draper to get that volume of water up here. That presently is under design at this point in time, and then we'll have to construct a water line from Lake SARDAS over to Lake Otoka. And the parallel water lines is in the $600 million range, and the water line from SARDAS to Otoka is about $150 million. So it's-- and we probably, this will be done over a long period of time, we don't need the water immediately. We probably won't be taking this water for at least 15 years before we're actually taking SARDAS water in Oklahoma City. State law presently does not allow for out-of-state water sales, but if that law is changed, this agreement also provides for a framework between the nations and the state as to how that would be done, and if revenues were to come back because of out-of-state water sales, how that would be worked out. And then finally, I think I need to point out that this is all has to be approved by Congress. And so we're gonna take it. We met with our congressional delegation. We don't think this will be controversial, but you never know, and going to Congress is always a bit of a risky proposition. We're going to try to run this in the lame-duck session this year. We may be successful, and if we're not, we'll run it into the new administration. And with that, Brian Naz-- well, Craig Keith is here. Craig is, I'm sorry, in-house counsel, who's been general counsel to the Water Trust for at least 30 years, I think. And Brian Nazarinus is, has been our out-of-house counsel on this project, has been intimately involved, and Brian is just an expert on Indian water rights. He was named the-- he's from Colorado, Denver, and he was named the Colorado Water Attorney of the Year last year, this year, last year, recently. And he's gonna fill you in on a few of the other aspects of the agreement.
Thank you. Good morning. I want to thank Mr. Couch and Craig Keith for working with him on this great project. It's a substantial accomplishment for the city. I think that Jim summarized the settlement agreement very well. I don't have a lot to add in terms of details unless there are questions, but that is the essence of the settlement. But I think that in a larger picture, it's just, I've been doing this kind of work, water rights representation, for 30 years, and have been involved in people trying to advance large projects, and usually, these things, something of this magnitude doesn't get this far. And the ability to develop around 100,000 acre-feet of reliable yield from such a far distance away in light of substantial opposition, and be able to pull that opposition together and come up with a settlement that still accomplishes the city's goals, I think is just really remarkable. It's historic for the state in terms of the issues related to the Chickasaw and Choctaw tribes, and there's these sovereign issues. But I think, and it's obviously historic for the city in terms of almost doubling its water supply, but I also just think the accomplishment, and particularly with Mr. Couch's leadership, is just a very remarkable accomplishment. We're not there yet, but we are past the 50-yard line, probably around the 25-yard line, hopefully, maybe the 10. But we're down towards the end, and with congressional approval, this is gonna get done, and assuming that occurs, it will be, again, quite an accomplishment for the city. So, thank you very much.
Your Honor, we should add that the Water Resources Board, the State Water Resources Board approved this agreement Friday afternoon, and the Choctaw Nation approved it on Saturday, and the Chickasaws are here early this week.
Your Honor, if I may speak just briefly, this is a wonderful example where parties with differing views have come together with a great solution. The Department of Interior, the state, the tribes, Oklahoma City. It is a historic achievement, and there are a couple of people I'd like to recognize in making this possible. First of all, I'd like to recognize Lee R. West, the honorable judge that handled this case. He's brilliant, he's humorous, he is a hard worker.
He's tough.
He's tough, but he has this unique ability of bringing people together and resolving very, very difficult disputes. And I'd just like to read what he said about this. "I've been on the bench for 51 years, but this is an especially proud moment to witness all of these diverse parties coming together to find solutions that are in the best interest of all Oklahomans in my home state." This is without doubt a historic achievement, and it is. It's a defining moment. It's something that years and years from now, people will look back upon and say that this was a great thing that was accomplished. So I'd like to recognize Marsha Slaughter, Pete White, the mayor, of course, Jim Couch. I'd also like to recognize Kenny Jordan and his staff for outstanding work. I would especially like to recognize Craig Keith, who was the laboring oar, the elbow grease. He did all the hard work, and if this room was full right now, I'd ask them to applaud for the great work that you did, Craig. Brian, thank you very much. We really appreciate all you did, and I just think it's important to recognize these people on a great accomplishment. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think that this is a really historic thing that has happened, and it's gonna go kinda unnoticed because most people don't understand it. I mean, I know that if I was hearing all this right now, I wouldn't understand a single thing of it, of what you guys are, what everybody's talking about, but thanks to all our executive session discussions, I actually do kinda know what's going on. So it is a historic thing, but it's just hard to visualize for most people who live in Oklahoma City that, but it truly is, so. Anybody else have any other questions?
Well, I just want to echo all that. I think this is by far the most important thing that's happened in the five years I've been on council. It is historic. I think 50 years from now, they won't remember any of us, they won't really remember anything we've done, maps included. They'll remember this. I mean, this will be the biggest gift we give to future generations, I think, as water becomes increasingly scarce and important in this century, maybe as sea levels rise on the coast. This is a huge, huge advantage for Oklahoma City and for economic growth, and so I just want to express my gratitude. I know how hard you've worked, Jim, and everybody else in city staff. I just want to express my gratitude. I know it's been a long haul, but it's the biggest gift that we can give to future generations. The one question I would have, I didn't know that it gave a framework for future sales because I think that will be, how would that impact Oklahoma City, and what are the parameters of future sales to Dallas or Texas or?
Well, it should not impact Oklahoma City. Our water's upstream on that, and ours will be a priority permit over any subsequent permits to come down the line. In Oklahoma, we have an appropriate permit process based upon the date of the issuance, and our permit would precede any of those. So ours would be a priority water, so it should not affect Oklahoma City. Brian, you want to talk about the--
For an out-of-state water sale?
Yeah.
The, so there's a--
First of all, it's incumbent to point out, which we point out almost ad nauseam in some of the other meetings, that it is not legal right now for the state to sell water out of state.
Right.
But in the event that that law is changed, then--
Correct. So there's a settlement, it's called the Settlement Commission, and it is made up by representatives of the state and the nations. Any application for an out-of-state water transfer would need to be submitted to that Settlement Commission. They would review it in cooperation with the technical support from the OWRB. Then they would make a recommendation to the legislature, and then basically, the legislature will decide whether to approve the recommendation, and then, or the out-of-state transfer. The OWRB would still issue any permit if it was approved, and then there are provisions in terms of if there's money, which presumably, it would be, how that money would be dispersed with basically weighted average to projects in southeast Oklahoma. But there are a lot of political hoops that will need to be jumped through with the nations in southeast Oklahoma at the front end of that alignment, and I think it would have to be a real consensus type of solution for that to occur, to be able to go through those hoops. I don't think anybody's gonna come along and jam something down people's throats. And as Jim said, the city is fully protected in terms of its existing water rights if something like that occurs.
So in terms of economic growth, I mean, there's two. One, you get the actual water, but two, it's a huge strategic advantage that we have this dedicated water, and basically, Dallas and some other cities are gonna find it increasingly difficult as the century goes on. So do you feel that as the legislature, if it were to become increasingly starved for revenues, would potentially turn to this as a revenue source?
I choose not to speculate with the legislature.
Well, I hope the legislature would consider long-term advantages over short-term, and I hope that we could stay engaged with them in that discussion. Thanks. Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, I'll look for a motion. Everybody cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item M is claims recommended for denial. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And item 11 is items from council. Mark, you got anything? Joe? Larry?
Ed, just thanks to the staff that hung in there yesterday. I heard we got hundreds of calls on the Black Mass thing, and I, you know, at the legislature, if you got those many calls, they would just shut down the phone lines, and you'd get to leave a message, which nobody would ever listen to. But we try and talk to everybody. I mean, I just think a lot of it was abusive yesterday, I've heard, telling our staff they're gonna go to hell because they're not pulling Jim out to trample the Constitution. I mean, it's not, our staff can't do anything, and I'm just very grateful for the staff talking to the citizens, not putting it on voicemail and hanging in there, and I'd like that to continue, and so I just hope the public would always treat our staff with the respect they deserve.
You know, it's First Amendment's freedom of speech. It isn't selective freedom of speech. We have to let everybody deal with them equally.
Right. Okay, item 12, the city manager reports.
A few weeks, months ago, Councilman Stone, I guess it was probably when we adapted the budget, Councilman Stone, Cypher, and Councilman Greenwell asked for an interim update from Russell Evans regarding the economy. So we've, Russell has performed an update and is here to present that to us this morning. So, Russell?
Appreciate the opportunity, the invitation to come back and visit for a few minutes, and the pace with which you move through the morning's business, I can only assume that reflects an enthusiasm to spend a few minutes with an economist, but it's probably not the case. I think what you have in front of you is a mid-year, a summer update to the forecast and some of the conditions, a little mostly commentary, and the 10 or 12 minutes I'll take today will all come from the executive summary, so-- So, the slides that you'll see in front of you will all be a reflection of this executive summary. I'm going to go through these slides pretty quickly and just pause at a few points here to visit. The first three slides in the slide deck, so if you go to the, the first slide is just US GDP. US GDP is growing, the first half of this year at a pace of just over 1%. You can see in the slide, the initial expectation was for second-quarter growth at 2.5%. It came in at just over 1%, pushed some of that strength at the third quarter. So, the US is growing, US economy is growing at just under, just over 1%. Will grow at just under 2% for the year. If you go to the next slide, Doug, the labor market, we had a very soft May jobs report, right? I think we had 38,000 initial report, it's revised up just a little bit. June and July were very strong jobs reports, but on the whole, the three-month average is still just under 200,000 monthly job gains, consistent with our forecast you see there in the blue numbers. This is a trend that we expect to see continuing. And again, just by frame of reference, what we had come to expect over the last 100 years or so, certainly in the last 50 years, is that when the US economy is growing at its normal pace, the normal full-strength pace of US economic growth is 3% GDP growth and 250,000 jobs added a month. And so, we're still growing at a pace that's below what we've become accustomed to believe is the norm, right? And so, this has been going on since we left the Great Recession. We've talked about this at recent budget workshops. We continue to be in this situation, whether you call it the new normal, or almost average, or the new mediocre, or whatever you want to call it, we're still in this situation of growing below what we would think about as our long-term trend. The next slide shows interest rates, our interest rate projection there in the orange is for the federal funds rate. This is really a measure of monetary policy. Expectation now, the Federal Reserve is trying to put a September rate hike on the table. We think that's unlikely. December is more likely. Right now, we're sort of trending between 25 and 50 basis points. We see the federal funds rate in that range at the end of this year, and then moving up towards 1.2% by the end of next year, if there's a move towards normalization. The problem here is the next slide, I think, is worth taking just a minute. These are two stories that came out of recent financial newspapers. If you picked up the paper on July the 12th, picked up the USA Today, and you went to the money section, you would have seen a story that said that economists at UBS and JP Morgan Chase are now putting the odds of a recession in the next 12 months at over 1 in 3. So, you would have picked up the paper and said, you know, UBS is putting the risk at 34%, US recession in the next 12 months, JP Morgan puts it at 37% of a US recession materializing in the next 12 months. So, this is the highest that they've had their recession indicators at since we've left the Great Recession. And so, on July 12th, you pick up the paper, and you see these two big shops are planning around, at least a decent probability that we could move into a US recession. And then, you get the Federal Open Market Committee meeting on July 27th, and you get this report, and they say, just that last sentence, "Near-term risks to the outlook have diminished." And so, when you think about the confusion this creates, right, there's still, and I know economists like to talk out of, you know, both sides of our forecasts, we like to cover ourselves by talking on the one hand and on the other hand, and looking at all perspectives, but I'll confess that it really is growing tiresome for me to have to continue to talk about the uncertainty in the forecast, right? It would be nice to get to a situation where we feel like there's some of the probability mass that's stuck out there in the tails of the distribution shrinks, and we get more of that probability mass in the middle over a tighter range, but you can see the uncertainty that still lingers in the system nationally. So, you have that national backdrop. You go to the next two slides, these are slides that were presented by Eric Long at the Oklahoma City Chamber. These are the 31 large metro areas in the nation. The next slide will show you the six that are growing faster than Oklahoma City. So, it's still the case that Oklahoma City's population growth, our jobs growth, is still far outpacing national averages and national trends, and the underlying geography trend that you see here is that economic activity and people are still moving from northeast to southwest. So, south and west beats north and east in terms of population growth and economic activity. And three of the large metropolitan areas that are outpacing the population growth rates in Oklahoma City are on the I-35 corridor, Houston and San Antonio and Dallas, and Oklahoma City is right here on this corridor. So, Oklahoma City is still benefiting in the long run from some geographic strength. Now, those long-run strengths, people and population economic activity maybe aren't as reflective in your monthly sales tax checks as you'd like, but it's still a source of underlying strength. If you go to the next slide, and this is a lot going on this slide, but this looks at different industries, and it sort of compares Oklahoma to Oklahoma City to Tulsa to the rest of the state. So, for example, that first set of bars, it's non-farm payrolls, I think this is June to June, June this year to June last year. If you just looked at the statewide number, you'd say, well, the state's up 200 jobs this June compared to last June. If you looked at Oklahoma City, you'd say, well, Oklahoma City's up 6,700 jobs this June to last June. Tulsa's down 800 jobs, and the rest of the state is down 5,700 jobs. And you can combine what's happening in the rest of the state and Tulsa, Oklahoma City to get that statewide number. If you look through these industries, the pattern that you see emerging, I think, you know, construction is a nice example. You see construction, the state's up 7,700 jobs over the last 12 months in the construction industry. Oklahoma City's up 3,700. So, where there's an area of strength, Oklahoma City is disproportionately strong, right? So, anywhere that there's broad strength, Oklahoma City is disproportionately strong. Where there's weakness, for example, in manufacturing or mining, Oklahoma City is disproportionately weak, right? So, where we're weak, where the state is weak, Oklahoma City's not as weak as the rest of the state, and where there is strength, Oklahoma City is stronger than the rest of the state. And so, when you combine, these are long-run, you know, factors of the long-run geography, but the economic conditions in the city are still pretty sound, all things considered. And we'll look at a couple of slides here in a minute that reinforce that. On the energy industry, we have seen now that the Bank S&amp;B Oklahoma Energy Index that we produce every month, we've seen a floor developing, so we've had three months where the index has increased in strength. We expect that to give up some ground this month in July, and so later this week or early next, we'll have the data necessary to do the July reading. We suspect the July measure may come down just a little bit, but then August should be back up. And so, by the time you extend this out, you'll have a run of about six months in the energy index where the energy index is developing a bottom and improving modestly, right? So, we're moving into a period that certainly we wouldn't want to characterize as full health in the industry, but we're definitely moving from a period of acute distress into recovery, right? It's, again, you know, we always sort of use this analogy, it's that interim between when you're at the height, you know, at the very worst of your flu, and before you're back to 100%, there's that period of recovery where you just, you don't feel quite right, but you certainly know that you're on the mend. That's where we are right now in the energy industry. In terms of the oil prices, oil prices fundamentally should continue to move higher. We're very confident that oil prices, unless a recession does develop, as UBS and JP Morgan suggest is possible, oil prices will move higher through the end of this year. I think we're increasingly confident of that reality, and that will certainly help a little bit. If you look at private employment, again, this is in line with the forecast we presented six months ago at the Budget Workshop. Growth rates in Oklahoma City at about half the rate that we've become accustomed to. So, I just picked about a year ago, two years ago, in June of, summer of 2014, private employment, private payrolls in Oklahoma City were growing at about 2.5% per year, and right now, they're growing at about 1.1% per year this summer, this June, year-over-year. Again, consistent with the overall forecast that was presented, I think the mantra we tried to leave you with in August was, expect half of the growth that you've come to expect. And that's really where we're at. We're still in that situation as we move through this year, where we'll post growth this year at about half the rate that we've come to expect from recent years. The same is true with private weekly wages. See weekly wage growth here in the Oklahoma City metro. You had periods of robust growth in 10 and 12, and then you went through a period where you had kind of a flat movement and then a contraction, but we've turned that corner. Again, as we talked about in the Budget Workshop in February, I think we talked about by the second half of this year, we expected to see that wage growth reach a bottom, stabilize, and begin to post some modest gains, and we've got three months in a row of reported increases in weekly wages here in the city. So, again, growing payrolls, growing private sector payrolls, growing wages here in Oklahoma City. So, let me just show you two slides that you might find interesting from the, we conduct this survey of households for the RVS Consumer Sentiment Survey. The first slide just shows Oklahoma relative to the states around us. Oklahoma's the blue bar. What's interesting is that in the spring of this year, when we posed this question, for the first time, Oklahoma had the lowest consumer sentiment reading relative to Missouri and Arkansas, to our regional counterparts that participate in the survey, and then even relative to the National University of Michigan reading. So, for the first time, Oklahoma's sentiment really dropped, and one of the things that was at play there, if you look at the next slide, was the big jump in uncertainty about what's going on in the economy. So, if you look from September 2015, the gray bar there in the middle is the percent of households when we asked them, what do you think, what do you expect from the next 12 months from business conditions? What do you think the economy is going to be like, general business conditions for the next 12 months? And you can see in the gray bars that the people that said, yeah, I don't know, I'm uncertain, had been 23, 24, 27, and 27%. That leapt in March of 2016 to 47%. So, there was a huge leap in the number of households that responded to this question, what do you expect from business conditions in the next 12 months, and reached the, and said, you know what, I just don't know. I can't make sense of it, it's uncertain, I'm not sure what's going on. So, there's a lot of anxiety that I think is still out there among households.
Is that just Oklahomans, or is that you, the entire country?
That's Oklahomans answering questions about Oklahoma economic conditions. And then, I think the next slide is just a refresher of what we presented in February, early February at the Budget Workshop. As we finished out fiscal year 16, our models, we're looking for sales tax fiscal year to end somewhere between down 1.6 and down 1.8. I think the June check moved us just outside of that last check of the last fiscal year, moved us just out of that 1.8% range, I think closer to 1.9%. And we set our, sort of our baseline expectation for fiscal year 17 between flat, down 0.7% and up 1.4%. So, before I show you the last slide, I'll just make a couple of comments here as we think about where we're at in fiscal year 17. The underlying economic conditions really aren't that bad, right? And so, we've had a bad June check, a bad August check, and a bad July check, but not order of magnitude that you have with June and August. But the underlying economic conditions, as we showed you, are really, are not that bad. Private payrolls are growing, wages are moving up, population is still moving south and west, still coming to the I-35 corridor, still coming to Oklahoma City. We're still benefiting from some increased density, from some agglomeration. There's some underlying economic strength there that's hard to reconcile with the last couple of sales tax checks. And I'll tell you right now, it's not that hard. If I build a model and I put US economic conditions in the model, and I say, well, Oklahoma City's going to be more like the US, right? We're going to grow at a modest but decent pace, right, below our long-term trend, but it's not that hard for the models to turn optimistic and say, well, you know, 2016, well, certainly before this most recent check, to say, well, fiscal year 2017, you can get an optimistic model that seems plausible, that will generate a number of 2.5%. Similarly, it's not that difficult to take a model right now of sales tax forecasts and let the last three months form a short-run trend, and believe that that trend is indeed a trend that has legs, and get a forecast that, again, seems plausible in its underlying assumptions, that comes in closer to negative 2.5%. Right? So, you have this tremendous range of what is plausible, depending on what you believe about, is the US going to be more, is Oklahoma City going to be more like the US economy, and we have that underlying strength, or are these last three checks really a trend that we should be concerned about? As we watch for the September check, I think the baseline expectations for the September check to be down, we're looking for a September check somewhere in the neighborhood of down about 2%. But we knew that was coming, we knew the first quarter of this fiscal year was going to be challenging. Again, the August check makes it more challenging than we had anticipated, but we knew any strength that was going to develop, we wouldn't see until the second quarter. So, we're looking for the September check to see how good or bad is the September check relative to that expectation of down 2%. And then, as we move into the second quarter of the fiscal year, do we show the sort of strength that will offset some of that weakness in the first quarter, or do we show the sort of strength that just moves us laterally? Again, as I, I'll talk about, the last thing I'll say on the September check, I was just looking at some recent model runs. You know, we do these model runs under different scenarios and assumptions, and talk about them, and I filed them away, and I looked at them. The most optimistic of the plausible scenarios generated a check, a September check of up 1%. The most pessimistic generated an estimate for the September check of down 4.5%. Again, these are all, these are what we would consider plausible, while there's just a tremendous amount of uncertainty as we try to reconcile the economic data with the fiscal data. So, we're looking at the September check closely, and then really at the second quarter. I think by the time you and I meet together, hopefully, I'll be invited in February, by the time we get together after the New Year, and we can see that the first half of this fiscal year, hopefully, we'll have a better sense of where that stands. The last slide I'll show you, one of the things that stood out about the August check that's unusual, this is just the growth rates for the last five years, '12, '13, '14, '15, and '16, for these first nine months. So, you sort of see the fluctuations. You have some months where, some years where you had big growth, some years where you had contractions year-over-year, with the exception of August. August tends to be, at least over the last five years, August has always been the most boring month in terms of, in a good way, in terms of sales tax collections. So, going back to '12, '13, '14, and '15, you know, the growth rates were 4.7% in '12, and then basically 2% to 2.5% in '13, '14, and '15. So, the '16 check of down 6% is really pretty unusual over the last five years, even in years where things were down like 13, August posted gains. And then, even in years where things were really robustly up, like 2012, I'll tell you, in 2012, September was up almost 17%, October up 6%, November up 2.5%, December up 10%. So, even in 2012, you have those big blue bars. You go out past the months that aren't shown there, even September, October, November, December, they were, you know, big growth months, but August posted the modest 4.7%. So, when things are great, August is okay. When things are bad, August seems to do okay anyway. So, it does provide for us a, I wouldn't quite say bellwether, but it's not in keeping with the five-year norm of August being the least eventful, the least eventful month. And so, whether that's anomaly, whether we get further looks at the data, and we can explain that with a one-time event, or whether it truly proves to be a developing trend, the next few months will tell, and I will watch as anxiously, not as anxiously, but I will watch anxiously with you to see how those numbers come in. Thank you for letting me take a few minutes today.
I guess a couple of questions. You talk about population growth, job growth, economic growth, and on the one hand, we could look at that globally, we could look at it through the US economy, we could look at it locally in Oklahoma City. And the thing that, what I hear you saying right now is, the next few months are going to tell us where we are headed, and it's not fair to say yet we're in a recovery mode, and like some of those earlier publications in the spring that talked about a recession coming down the pike, it's not fair to say we're there either. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that's largely correct. At the regional level, so at the national level, the Bureau of Economic Analysis collects pretty good data on business activity, and their readings of recessions are, I think, are as meaningful as you can get. When you get to the state and the city level, the BEA is extrapolating from business conditions using a set of equations, algorithms, and in Oklahoma, in energy states, when energy prices fall, the algorithms can't do anything but show a recession. And so, in that sense, I was just talking to a colleague yesterday, I'm always a little hesitant to look at state GDP numbers, and certainly now the BEA is producing metro GDP numbers as my benchmark of what's happening to the economy. I think you want to look at a collection of data, what's happening to incomes, what's happening to wages, what's happening to employment, and when you look at the entirety of the dataset, what you find, certainly at Oklahoma City level, is, I don't think that I would use the word recession, but clearly, we're not robust either. We're somewhere in that middle period of trying to gain footing for a recovery.
You also wouldn't use the word recovery at this stage?
No, not yet.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of your forecasting and a lot of your comments were directed at sales tax and what it was doing. Do you factor in, do we have data on the buying habits of our public and what that may be doing to sales tax? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but if a lot of our citizens began to use internet sources out-of-state for purchases, with the fact that we don't have that Marketplace Act in effect where we're getting any sales tax from that, money that I spent out-of-state on internet purchases will drive down my sales tax collections here in Oklahoma, and so that could be a contributing factor.
Right. So, the only information we collect on that is one question in our surveyed Oklahoma households about how do they feel about households about how do they feel about buying conditions generally? So, are they inclined to make major purchases? Do they feel like their situation's secure enough that now's a good time for them to go out and make a major household purchase? We generally in the question, we try to, you know, try to frame the question, we're talking about cars, appliances, you know, major household items. And that question, this most recent report came back that people felt like now was not a good time to buy. So, there's some retraction on that. There's obviously evidence at the national level that people are steering their purchases increasingly towards getting more and more comfortable with online purchases across generations, and that's developing. And there's no reason, I don't have any data, but there's no reason for me to think that wouldn't be true on some level in Oklahoma City, that Oklahoma City would be an anomaly to that, right? I assume there's truth to that here as well.
That's a great point, Larry, and thanks for making it. I just, I hope that people of Oklahoma City know that there's a consequence in terms of the level of city services to buying online as opposed to shopping local and supporting Oklahoma City businesses. I appreciate you being here. I love that you're giving this in this forum as, I mean, over at the Congressional Center, it's fine, but it's not televised, and people can't watch it later. I wish we, in January or February, we did it here where everybody could hear you. So, that's one. I appreciate you coming here mid-year. I want to ask you, because we've talked about, as we oftentimes do, month-to-month, short-term, reactionary, I want to just talk for a second about like 10 years from now. Because next year, there will be really the opportunity that comes along once a decade that the council kind of shapes investment for the next decade. One, in the form of its General Obligation Bond Program, which could be five to 10 years. It could be pushing a billion dollars of infrastructure and different investments. And then, the MAPS program expires, and that oftentimes has been like a mini WPA program for the city where we do a lot of construction and it helps the economy. Part of the geo-bond is economic development dollars, and last time, we structured it for, there were certain conditions, you had to create a certain number of jobs at a certain salary, and ended up, a large percent of it went into oil and gas companies that were creating jobs during the boom. So, you don't necessarily have to answer this right now, but I'd ask for your help as we try and prepare a list of projects and priorities, and how do we shape things for the next 10 years so that we diversify our economy and we increase our odds for success 10 years from now, not just month to month to month? The thing that causes some fear every time that I hear you speak is that, is how tied we are to the oil and gas industry. I think in January or February, and the year before, you indicated that the single most important variable to, I think, sales tax collections was the number of oil and gas sector jobs. That that was the single greatest driving force because of the trickle effect, or the ripple effect through the other sectors. And then, you're saying to Mark that the algorithms, there just isn't, if oil and gas is down, there isn't a way that we're not in a recession. And so, since 80% of all oil goes to transportation, and you factor out planes and shipping, the bulk of it is automobiles, right? But you have companies like BMW saying that they want their entire fleet by 2025 being electric. You have streetcars coming online, which is basically an electric vehicle. You may have an increase in demand for oil over the next 10 years, but you might not. You might have a serious decline in demand for oil over the next 10 years, certainly '15, '20. And so, how do we extract or how do we disengage where we are absolutely tied to where the algorithms won't allow us to not be in a recession, as you said? What investments do we make now to try and create diversification of our economy?
So, those are all, I mean, those are all great questions. And I'll just share two thoughts that come to mind. One is I was driving up here, and another is, we talked about diversification, the oil and gas industry in particular. You know, some other municipalities, right, suburban municipalities in Oklahoma City have, I don't know what I would call an advantage, but, you know, when it comes to managing the city and economic development in the city, it's rooftops and retail. And they have an attitude that, you know, that they're less interested in attracting jobs, right? I don't need the businesses, I don't need the manufacturing, I want rooftops and retail. But I think your point is well-taken that in a city like Oklahoma City, that's not a luxury that you have. You have to be mindful of being in a major metropolitan area, that infrastructure investment and programs are facilitating legitimate economic development, good jobs, good-paying jobs, jobs for your population, and encouraging some density that encourages productivity spillovers. And so, I think, you know, the 10-year outlook on how do you strategically, you know, discipline yourself not to be focused singularly on rooftops and retail, but how do we maintain a legitimate focus that a major metropolitan area has to have, I think, of generating good jobs and productivity gains? The second question, I think, on the oil and gas industry in particular, is, you know, we have this debate in our, in the energy sector and in our energy programs at the time of how long do we have? Do we have 10 years? Do we have 25 years? Do we have 50 years? Because you're right. I think that, you know, the consensus on the table is that at some point, technological solutions will move us away from fossil fuels long before we run out of fossil fuels. There will be a solution. As you alluded to, you know, with the BMW example, the solution is really not, the challenge that we face in the energy sector is not energy production. There is plenty of energy to power economic activities, energy storage, right? So, I think if we could solve the energy storage problem, then it makes it much easier to transfer away from fossil fuels. The beauty of fossil fuels is both their abundance, their dense energy content, and the ability to generate energy, you know, almost in real time. You know, the gap between natural gas and like a power plant and electricity generation is almost zero when compared to the alternatives. So, I think it's really, it's an energy storage question. So, when we think about Oklahoma's oil and gas, what I tell audiences is, today's oil and gas companies are technology companies. And I don't know how you do this, but I think the way you get to a diversified economy is you find a way to say, whatever years we have left, whether it's 10 or a generation, how do you get in those oil and gas companies? And I think GE is a great source here to use. How do you get those oil and gas companies, and how do you spin off technology companies out of those oil and gas companies? Because they are so technologically intensive right now that they are generating programs, code, operations, logistics, smart meters, data communication, data analytics, there's so much going on in those doors right now, that you kind of have, you have a canvas from which you can create some economic opportunity. And I think that's what's a little different now than where it was 30 or 40 years ago when it was, you know, to all respect to my father, who's a geologist, it was all geologists and engineers, and there weren't transferable skill sets. Well, now, you have, you know, oil and gas companies, you have data analytics and communications, and you have all these job skills that are transferable to other industries. The question that, the hard question that we don't have an answer, what are those other industries going to be? And how do you encourage the facilitation of alternative industries, right? How do you get those skill sets that are in those oil and gas shops right now to be prepared to move to that new industry when the demand for fossil fuel does decline, whether that's 10 years, 20 years, 50 years? You know, people have different perspectives, but when it does happen, I think we have some resources here. The question is, how do we leverage them? And I don't know that answer, but I'm confident that the resources are here to leverage into a different economy when the time comes.
I really appreciate the answer and the discussion. And if you can think with us over the next six, nine months as we're trying to come up with different projects, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Russell.
Appreciate it.
It was interesting.
There are a couple of other city manager reports. Craig, you'd be happy to answer any questions on them.
Okay. I guess we got no questions?
Yes.
You good?
That's it.
All right. Citizens, we heard, I don't think anybody signed up, right? All right. Well, with that, we're adjourned.